Welcome to the Aurora Grande City Council meeting for June 10, 2025. Madam Clerk, could you please take role?
Councilmember Low.
Here.
Councilmember Marvelia.
Here.
Councilmember Guthrie.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Seacrest.
Here.
And Mayor Ray Russum is absent.
Thank you. Please join me in a moment of reflection. Please join me in the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, and this is my first time doing a whole meeting, so please be nice. Okay, agenda review, let's see. 5A, there's no closed session announcements. 5B, is there a motion to agree to read ordinances in title only?
So moved.
Do we need a second?
I'll second.
Do we just do a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
Any opposed? Thank you. 6A, we have a special presentation, Honorary Proclamation Recognizing June 19, 2025 as Juneteenth in Aurora Grande. And if, I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, Juanita Perkins could join at the podium.
It's Juanita.
Yes.
June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth in Aurora Grande, whereas Juneteenth has become the harbinger of the ending of the institution of slavery in this great nation, and whereas Juneteenth embodies the indomitable human spirit of the past, the present, and all time, and whereas the celebration of Juneteenth gives us all the opportunity to rededicate ourselves to the true American spirit, and whereas we are citizens who wish to secure the blessings of freedom, justice, and equality for all in this great city of ours, and whereas the collaboration of community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, local businesses, and local government are committed to being part of the solution and guidance in continuing the struggle for freedom, justice, and equality for all. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Kate Seacrest, standing in for Mayor Ray Russum, Mayor, of the city of Aurora Grande hereby recognizes June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth in the city of Aurora Grande, and urge all to join in recognizing the importance of this day. And let me present that to you, and then if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I appreciate you guys understanding the importance of Black culture and us being able to share it. I do want to say I'm from Paso Robles. Go Bearcats! We are having Juneteenth on June 21 at the city park from 1 to 4. We will have a couple from Ventura, the '90s babies, so we're taking it back. So if you got, we're inviting all, there's gonna be, I have three vendors of food, so please come. Everybody's invited. Thank you.
Okay, and now turning it over for City Manager Communications to Mr. Downing.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. We won't hold that "Go Bearcats" comment against her.
We're just gonna, we're just moving on.
We'll move on. A couple of updates for you this evening. So after a year and a half of work, the Aurora Grande Police Department is beginning the installation of an important radio encryption project. This project will align your police department with all other law enforcement agencies in San Luis Obispo County, and will allow for the safe and confidential transmission of information. So we're very happy that all of that hard work is paying off, and we'll see that implemented here shortly. And then speaking of the police department, in the audience tonight is our interim Chief of Police, Dave Culver. The recruitment for our next Chief of Police is currently underway. The city has teamed up with Mosaic Public Partners for this recruitment. It can be contacted for confidential inquiries, if anybody has any. The application period is open through June 30, 2025, and applications can be submitted directly on Mosaic's website at W, try that again, www.mosaicpublic.com. Shifting over to Public Works, the Trafficway Bridge Replacement Project continues to move forward, and the city's first phase of the first of our first-ever buy-local program is up and running. Folks can submit receipts for purchases from qualifying businesses within the project program area to qualify for a $20 gift card while supplies last, and you can head to southcountychambers, with an S, dot com, and select Aurora Grande Village at the top for more information on that program. And then lastly, I mentioned this at the last meeting, but the city is working with a company called Flashvote to engage the community and gather valuable input from residents in order to inform future decisions. So I'm gonna read this very wonderful prepared statement. "Do you have about one minute a month to help make Aurora Grande better? We encourage residents to sign up to participate. A link is on the city's website, and signup takes less than one minute. Your input is always kept anonymous. Personal or demographic information collected by Flashvote is never shared with the city or anyone else. When residents sign up, they can determine how surveys are received, whether by email, text, or phone call. They will receive a notification whenever there is a new survey, and they will have 48 hours to participate before the voting closes. And then, once the survey is closed, everyone who participated will automatically receive a summary of the overall results and be able to see how their responses compare to the group." We really do encourage everyone in the city to sign up, to take those. It's gonna be a great way for us to really connect with folks out in the public and get some valuable feedback on various aspects of city governance. So really happy with that, and with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much. Let's see, where are we now? There's no City Council reports because it's the beginning of the month. So that brings us to item 8, Community Comments and Suggestions. This is a public comment period, invitation to members of the community to present issues, thoughts, or suggestions on matters not scheduled on this agenda. Comments should be limited to those matters within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Members of the public may provide public comment in person or remotely by registering and joining the Zoom meeting utilizing the link that's been provided. So I guess at that point, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on items not on the agenda? And, yes, sorry?
Hi, I just have a couple of questions. The last meeting, you talked about the fire map, and then also about the fixing the street map, or the, however you, the domino effect of fixing them. And so I wanted to know where I could find those, or if they're available yet. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll ask the questions when we're done with folks who want to comment. Any other public comments? And Madam Clerk, can we check in Zoom?
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Thank you very much. And then I think may ask, City Manager Downing, I believe the question is, where can they access fire maps? And I'm not quite sure about the pavement question.
Certainly, so the fire maps are actually attached to your agenda this evening. They're part of the adoption of the resolution to actually, or adoption of the ordinance rather than to effectuate that change. So those can be found on there, we also have them on our website as well. And then we are working on a street map to actually color code when we're gonna be doing specific street paving, at least as we anticipated based on the preliminary treatment types, and how we can get the most bang for our buck. So that will be coming out, we have the list on our website, but not the actual visual map yet.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, that brings us to the consent agenda, number nine on the agenda tonight. So we have 9A through 9F, and I guess the first question is, does any member of the council wish to pull an item for separate consideration? And I'm seeing, okay, so then, do we have a motion? Sorry. I apologize. Do we have any public comments on the agenda? Consent agenda tonight? And, oh, Madam Clerk, you're checking Zoom.
Yes. Any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Thank you very much. In that case, do we have a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items 9A through 9F.
I'll second.
Then do we have a roll call?
Councilmember Low.
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie.
Yes.
Councilmember Marvelia.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seacrest.
Yes. Thank you. So that brings us right to public hearings, and 10A is regarding the fiscal year 2025 through 2027 biannual budget, and I believe Mr. Downing will make a presentation regarding that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem and members of the council. So this is the final item, the public hearing to consider your fiscal year 2025 through 2027 biannual operating budget. Things are a little bit different this year in terms of your operating budget. We talked about that as part of our preparation for this meeting. I'll turn it over to Director Valentine for the formal presentation, but in front of you this evening is basically all the fund summaries. And so what we're gonna be doing is we're gonna be working on the budget book to make it a little bit easier for folks to digest, a little bit more infographic related, so that folks can understand that a little bit more. We'll be bringing that to you when it's completed as a receivable file item on a future consent agenda. But for now, I'll turn it over to Director Valentine.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. I'm Nicole Valentine, the Administrative Services Director, and I will be providing a presentation for the public hearing to consider fiscal year 2025 through 27 biannual operating budget. This graphic depicts the budget process. In December and January, an Aurora Grande community priorities survey was published, and those responses were provided to the council on February 10 during a goal-setting meeting. Council established five major city goals for staff to prioritize for the upcoming biannual budget cycle. The general fund five-year financial forecast was presented on January 28 of 2025. The council goal-studying workshop established the following five goals: complete the general plan update, redevelop the East Grand Avenue corridor, pursue new revenue sources, implement road and sidewalk improvements, achieve, and achieve water resilience. And on May 13, council reviewed the 10-year capital improvement program budget totaling $138.1 million. On May 27, council reviewed the preliminary fiscal year 25-27 budget and draft work plans to achieve the five major city goals. And on June 3, the planning commission determined the CIP is consistent with the city's general plan. For the fiscal year 2025 through 27 biannual operating budget, we will review revenues and expenditures. This chart shows that sales and property taxes comprise the largest source of revenue in the general fund, together accounting for approximately 73% of revenue in that fund. Given this dependence on just two revenue sources, fluctuations in the amount of taxes received can have profound impacts on the city's ability to provide services. This chart shows that the consolidated general fund tax revenues have been trending upwards over the past few years and are expected to increase in both years of the biannual budget. This chart shows the proposed $35.6 million of the consolidated general fund expenditures budget for fiscal year 2025 through 26. In terms of the relative size of each department, the capital improvement program is the city's largest function with 25% of the budget. The police department represents 22% of the budget. Fire services for FCFA will receive 12% of the budget. Public Works and Community, excuse me, Public Works receives 10%, and Community Development will receive 6% of the budget resources respectively. The non-departmental category represents 9% of the general fund budget and includes items that affect all departments, such as annual payments to the city's unfunded accrued liability, property and general liability insurance, and transfers to the Streets Fund. This bar, excuse me, wrong direction. This bar chart shows the proposed $35.6 million consolidated general fund expenditures as a breakdown by each department with dollar figures, so it's the same information as the prior slide. The proposed fiscal year 2025 through 26 budget recommends approximately $55.7 million in expenditures, including operated costs such as salaries, benefits, services, supplies, maintenance, debt service, and capital-related item as shown in this consolidated fund summary. The proposed fiscal year 26-27 budget recommends approximately $55.4 million in the consolidated fund summary. The recommendation for your council tonight is to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 25 through 27 biannual budget and making appropriations for the amount budgeted and determine that adopting the budget is not a project subject to CEQA. I am available for any questions that council might have.
Thank you very much, Director Valentine. Does anyone on the council have questions for Ms. Valentine or Mr. Downing? No, looks like no. Sorry. Any comments from the public regarding the budget? Looks like no. And checking Zoom, Madam Clerk?
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Thank you very much. So going back to the council for comments, Councilmember Low.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Director Valentine and City Manager Downing. I just want to say, of course, thank you very much. I think this is a complicated process to come up with this budget. I also want to say thank you to the voters for having faith in voting for Measure E, because this is a great opportunity that brings revenue to the city, and we can deliver on those expectations. And so for me, it's an exciting time at the city to have this opportunity to expand on what we can deliver to the people. And so the budget is kind of reflective of that, so it's like, almost like a little Yahoo celebration here. And I also, I guess I have one reflection point. I mentioned this last time about the, a point about the city's goals, and there was a, we've had a slide a couple of times about this big iceberg in the ocean, and so, you know, the tip of the iceberg is what you see, and what you don't see is what's happening underneath the water. And what's happening underneath the water is the day-to-day, you know, the treading water, the, like, keeping the city moving and going. And that's 90% of the work that the city does. And I'm so thankful for that, for the staff and everything that goes into keeping the city running. And I want to have an opportunity in a future cycle, budget cycle, to look, have another look at that, that above-the-water, that strategic look. So this is the operating budget. This is what it takes to keep the city just going. And I would say I was, you know, one thing that struck me was the idea that a goal being to seek more revenue sources. And my first question is, for what? So if we look at that, the top of the ice, the proverbial iceberg, and have strategic goals, I look forward to a time where we can say, okay, what is that? If we are going to do more than just operate and keep things going, what's the more? What's the aspirational elements that we'd like to achieve? And there were some things we talked about at the last meeting with organizational assessment and things like that, that there seems to be support for, but right in this budget there isn't the funding for. But I'd like, I look forward to a time when we can talk about what the, like, order of magnitude is for budget for those aspirational things, and kind of look forward to that, because I see a lot of promise in this city, basically, quite frankly. And so this is just the beginning of a new era with Measure E, and so we don't need to bite off more than we can chew right now, but I just want to say how happy I am with where the city is and the potential that I see going forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Marvelia?
Yeah, that was great. Thank you for all that, because that's, you know, you read my brain a lot. It's interesting being a new council member, like, thrown right into a budget, because you're, like, so overwhelmed. So thank you to the staff for really guiding us through this process. I thought it was a very smooth process, and I really appreciate all the work that was done on everything. And I'm excited to see that 25% of this is going towards, you know, capital improvements that are really, really needed, and that our entire community is really aware that is needed. I think, I think they're gonna see the big changes that are coming out of this, and it's gonna be really clear where their money's going, so I'm really excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Guthrie.
Yeah, I do want to thank staff for their work on this. Always, every two years, this is a pretty extensive thing, and in particular this year, the CIP program with the 10-year plan all put together, and I think it gives people an idea of how expensive it is to maintain what we have. You want to call it the below-the-iceberg, below-the-water, but lots of people see above-the-water their streets, the buildings, that the general upkeep that we have to do, and, you know, the things that are also under those streets, the pipes and all that take place there. So, yeah, when I ran for office this time around, I specifically ran on that we needed to take care of the things that we have before we move on to new aspirational things. So I'll push back on that a little bit, so I do think this budget reflects at least what I wanted to see happen. And certainly, E24, I mean, it's 17%, almost 18% of that 25% comes directly from that one, that one change that we're seeing here. So I'm particularly happy that we were able to hold the line here and maintain that commitment. Thank you. Oh, one last thing. I do want to, just for the public that hasn't watched the whole thing, nobody asked any questions, that's because we've had extensive information gathering before tonight's meeting and two meetings previous. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would join all the other council members' comments. E24 is so worth celebrating. I'm excited that everyone engaged so much, and so much work went into this, and I think the public and the residents got the message, and they're, you know, understanding, like, how expensive so many of these things are. So that is phenomenal. I'm excited to see the capital improvement projects go forward. And again, if you're not involved in this, you just might not realize how many can be out there at once, and then, I know there was a concerted effort a few years, year or two ago, to really focus on which projects we are gonna work on so that staff is not overwhelmed and they can actually focus on realistic goals that the public is prioritizing. So I'm pretty excited. And yes, we've had a lot of questions and a lot of meetings for a number of months over this budget, so it's a long time coming, and thank you so much, Director Valentine and Mr. Downing, and everyone that's worked so hard on it. So that's all I have, I think, so. Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to adopt a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025-27 biannual budget and making appropriations for the amount budgeted and determining that adopting the, adopting of this, the adoption of this budget is not a project subject to California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second. Oops.
Go for it.
Oops, sorry, roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Guthrie.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seacrest.
Yes.
Councilmember Low.
Yes.
Councilmember Marvelia.
Yes.
Great, so that brings us to a business item, 11A, amendments to, excuse me. Sorry. To Aurora Grande Municipal Code Sections 8.36.020 and 8.36.050 regarding sales to minors in sales and distribution of electronic tobacco products. And we'll turn it over to interim Police Chief Culver.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. My name is David Culver, and I'm your interim Chief of Police. And Mayor Protem, like you, I'll ask for some forgiveness, this is my first time presenting to you, so. This evening, we're going to bring an introduction to amend the city's municipal code 8.36.020 and 8.36.050. So city municipal code 8.36.020 is sale of tobacco to minors. In 2019, the federal government set a minimum age to buy tobacco at the age of 21. In 2024, California Senate Bill 1230 repealed a previous exemption that allowed active military personnel between the age of 18 and 21 to purchase tobacco products. The proposed amendment to Section 8.36.020 would bring the city's municipal code in line with those federal and state statutes. In municipal code 8.36.050, in November 26 of 2019, City Council codified ordinance 702 prohibiting all retail sales of electronic cigarettes produced and known as vapes that had not received a pre-market review by the FDA. To elaborate on that, I'm gonna take it directly from the SAF report. So the FDA requires that new tobacco products, including vapes, underwent a process called pre-market tobacco product application. Before they can be legally sold to the United States, this process is intended to determine whether a product is appropriate for the protection of public health. However, the PMTA is not approval or endorsement of a product's safety. Instead, it's a regulatory hurdle that allows the FDA to evaluate whether a product should be allowed on the market under current federal standards, which are often more lenient than what many local communities would consider appropriate for public health. Many of these electronic or vape products that appear on store shelves today either are still under review or have not received this market authorization, or are being sold in violation of federal law. The PMTA process is backlog, and enforcement is inconsistent. This creates loopholes where unapproved or potentially harmful vape products continue to be widely accessible, including to minors. Local regulation is critical enforcement tool because of the long-term safety that these products remain unclear. So in amending the 8.36.050, the Aurora Grande Municipal Code currently states that it is allowed, if it is a new tobacco product, it requires a pre-market review under 21USC 380. under 21 USC 387J and may be amended from time. And it does not have a pre-market review order under the 21 USC 387J A1AI, as many can also be amended. So in, where do we get ahead? So the recommendation is to remove that language that was previously stated. This in essence closes the loophole and allows for no sales of electronic cigarettes or vapes to be sold within the city. So staff recommendation is to amend these two ordinance in the municipal code in order to close the loopholes that were provided and also amend the age for minors to be able to purchase tobacco products. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions on behalf of the council?
I have one.
Okay. Councilmember Lowe?
Thank you, Commander Culver. I have a question related to a recent meeting where we had students come during public comment from Friday Night Lights group. And they had written letters to us about a different product. I understand it's probably not a tobacco product, so it may not fit here. And I don't remember the proprietary name of it, but it was a nicotine-based product. And I was just wondering if you knew, if there's a relationship to this ordinance, if, if it was found that, that this could be expanded to go beyond tobacco, if that was also deemed something we wanted to prohibit in the city? Could, could that come forward at another time?
Well, you're correct. This, this ordinance has to do with strictly two tobacco products. If that's something the council would like us to explore, we could look at what the legal actions could be and what the city could explore on that.
Thank you. Any further questions? No? Okay. And then so, any questions, comments from the public? I guess questions? Sorry, I think, is it just comments? Sorry.
Hello, my name is Alexandria Davis. I noticed that the ordinance itself provides a definition by reference for new tobacco products, but I'm not seeing anything in the ordinance that would interact with that definition. Are the rules being changed for new tobacco products? And if not, what does redefining it do?
Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Amy Gilman and I want to introduce myself as the program manager for the county public health department's tobacco control program. I am here just to offer my assistance to the city getting through this ordinance amendment process. I would like to read a couple lines first, though, before I go too far off track. We wanted to thank you for paying attention to this very important topic. As mentioned, today's vapes contain as much as, contain as much nicotine as 600 cigarettes, making them extremely addictive, especially for youth who are particularly targeted in marketing. Locally, Luciamar's Unified School District, in their 2023-2024 Healthy Kids Survey, reported that 21% of 11th graders have ever tried, so at least once, a vape product. So that's one in five. And then unfortunately, the trend is that increasingly younger children are using vapes. 7% of 7th graders in Luciamar have admitted using vapes before. I have heard also recently that while the local schools do have vape detectors in the bathrooms, unfortunately, those detectors go off daily. It remains a serious problem amongst youth. This has been a nationwide issue. Within the state of California, 21 jurisdictions have advanced their bans on the electronic smoking devices to exclude all of them, as is currently proposed. Many others, including three jurisdictions within our county, have it as you currently have it, just putting things in perspective. So it, we quite appreciate the direction you're going. Our office is available to support you with data, resources, or any other technical assistance you may need as you consider the amendments. I'd like to point out that federally synthetic nicotine products, such as ZYN, the other oral nicotine products, are considered tobacco products federally. So that would extend your opportunities that way. Additionally, I wanted to point out for those who are involved in tobacco use, our county webpage does provide resources on how people could quit. That would be slocounty.gov/quit. And those are free resources and resources you can access through insurance. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And, sorry, would it, Commander Culver? Interim Police Chief Culver? No.
We do have, we do have a raised hand on Zoom, so with public comments still open. Okay, and Julia, you are now able to speak.
Great. All right, great, thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Julie Alper. I'm speaking on behalf of the San Luis Obispo County Tobacco Control Coalition to express our strong support for the proposed ordinance amending AGMC Sections 8.36.020 and 8.36.50. We want to thank the Aurora Grande Police Department and city staff for their leadership on this issue. This ordinance represents a bold and necessary step to close the dangerous loopholes that were also mentioned already, especially when it comes to electronic smoking devices. These products, we know, are highly addictive. They have high levels of nicotine, which can impact youth's brain development up to the ages of 25. And they are marketed specifically to attract youth. According to the most recent California Healthy Kids Survey, 21% of 11th graders in our county have already tried vaping or e-cigarettes. Local school councils are seeing this impact firsthand, reporting the vape detectors going off daily. And at Cal Poly, we are seeing some, some of our young adults actually transition from vaping to combustible or traditional cigarettes. That rate is actually higher now at Cal Poly. And we see them moving from vaping into the traditional cigarettes. The ordinance rightly prohibits the sale of all electronic smoking devices and raises the minimum sales age to 21 for everyone, including military personnel. And that would then be in line with state and federal law. We know that these policies are effective and evidence-based for protecting our youth. In addition, we are respectfully urging you to take two further additions to strengthen this ordinance. First, we are asking you to prohibit delivery sales of tobacco products through the internet apps or third parties to ensure youth cannot bypass the local restrictions. Second, we are asking you to remove the penalty on minors for possessions. While these ordinance are well-intended, research shows that criminalizing youth tobacco use is not only ineffective, it actually distracts from what works, which is holding retailers accountable and supporting education and cessation. By adopting this ordinance, Aurora Grande has the opportunity to take the lead on protecting the well-being of our community youth. And just because it was brought up, and I know Amy Gilman already addressed it, regarding the Friday Night Live group who came in about nicotine pouches, which are indeed tobacco products. You might know of them as then, ZYN. I just want to mention that the Tobacco Control Coalition would very much be in support if you wanted to add nicotine pouches within the definition of tobacco products or ban those products. Thank you for your time and your commitment to this important issue.
There are no other raised hands on Zoom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's see, so questions to, sorry. Anyone have questions of Commander Culver? Or do we already do that? Sorry. Comments? Let me back up. Can we ask, I'm not sure who would answer it, the questions from the audience?
So I'll look to interim chief Culver to answer some of the more technical questions. But I will, I'll venture kind of just some observations. So bringing up the nicotine pouches and the, what are commonly known as ZYN pouches, that's a, that's a new avenue. While the council were not prepared to make those amendments this evening, we'd have to do a lot more research. I believe we would be out in front on that issue, which isn't always a bad place to be, but it's not always the easiest place to be either because you're kind of, you know, making it up as you go. I know interim chief Culver can talk about the, the penalties against minors and the fact that it's a, it's another tool in the toolbox and that I don't believe we've had any citations since 2019 installation of these regulations. So we, we can take the direction to expand the, our city's regulations on ZYN products and bring that back to you at a future meeting. But I'll turn over any specific questions to interim chief Culver.
Back on? Okay. Yes, is expanding on city manager Downing. The, with regard to the, the ability to hold accountable in a citation phase for possession of tobacco products by a minor, it's, it also allows for that, that 21 and under. So that 18 to 21 not being a minor too. So it is a, it is an option, albeit more than likely a, a last option when dealing with it. But it is a, it is a tool that can be effective. But city manager is correct, since in 2019, there has not been a single incident where the Aurora Grande Police Department has cited a minor for possession of a tobacco product under that section.
Thank you. Did you have any input regarding prohibiting delivery sales and internet sales? Or would we just be asking for that to be explored? City manager Downing?
So I don't believe staff at this point in time is ready to add that amendment to the proposed ordinances in front of you. So in my mind, if that's agreeable to the council, you have two options. We can either bring that back as part of a future amendment or you can delay taking action on this this evening and direct us to come back with an ordinance that does that. Because I'm kind of just going off the cuff. Wouldn't, I would want to make sure that we're talking not only with the police department, but also with legal counsel about how best to craft that regulation.
Of course. And I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I'm just not quite sure how to proceed. So then, do we need a motion? If, if that's?
So it depends on what the council wants to do. If you want to move forward with the regulations as proposed and direct us to bring back further amendments at a future meeting, we can do that. We'll bring those back as, as quickly as we can, given the existing workload. I don't know that I would necessarily throw the baby out with the bathwater at this point. I think we've, we've put some regulations in front of you that the sooner we get them in place, the more quickly we can close those loopholes and come back with additional regulations in the future.
Okay, thank you. So then I'll open it up for council comments. Okay. Yes.
So I believe, and this might actually be better for the city attorney, that the question from the public was about, the question about by inference, that we identify tobacco by inference and what difference does that make? So I mean, I think I understand, but I wonder if you could explain if?
Sure. And we did have a public commenter make this distinction. I think it's important to note, the ordinance is specific to prohibiting the retail sale of vapes and electronic cigarettes. So it is true, there are, as we heard, sort of nicotine pouches or other items that city manager Downing mentioned. If that's of interest to the council, certainly our office in consultation with AGPD and the city manager could look into sort of regulating oral nicotine pouches or other forms of products. But this ordinance comes forward in part because PD was working with the California Department of Justice on, on taking these steps to come into compliance with state and federal law. And it is specific to electronic cigarettes and vapes.
Councilmember Maravilla?
I would be in support of passing the amendments as is and moving toward further amendments. I do think it's interesting, the penal, the penalty for the youth, I would be in favor of removing that as well, but it's not a deal breaker for me.
Councilmember Lowe?
Thank you very much. Yeah, this is, I think it's important to move forward with tonight. And I would like to see the opportunity to expand it to these other products that are kind of in the same family or the same intent and trouble, trolling type things. So I guess I, I will be in favor of passing this and requesting that, those additional amendments or opportunities, even if it's just a clarifying definitions that yes, this is included or, you know, as simple as it ever needs to be, but expanding that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Guthrie?
Yeah, I too am in favor of moving forward with the ordinance as written. I guess I'm more than a little bit hesitant about exploring things that nobody else has done. We comment on limited bandwidth for our staff and limited budget for our, for our city attorney. And I think being out on the leading edge of something like this, well, I think we need to leave that to, to the big boys like San Luis Obispo and some of the bigger cities. So I, I wouldn't be in favor of actually, unless there's some real simple, and I didn't hear a real simple way to do it, I wouldn't be in favor of having staff explore this and instead have, wait, wait for somebody to, else to step out there and, and make this change. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I clarify what, what I was saying? I think the more of the priority for me is not necessarily the ZYN. It's more of the mail order portion of it. I think that could be a little easier as well to make a clarification. Yeah.
With regards to that, we would need to take a look at how would we would enforce and regulate that because that has to do with internet sales coming directly to individual residents within the city. So that becomes a bit of a task when we are learning and figuring out how we will regulate and enforce that as well. So it's, I, I understand it, you know, is, is easy in theory. And then when we got to get into it, it could get a little bit more complicated. And also with regard to the ZYN product and tobacco, there's numerous products on the market that are tobacco-based. And as the city attorney pointed out, this has to do with electronic cigarettes and vaping. If we start to look at ZYN products and then other types of chewing tobacco and traditional cigarettes and so, just understanding where, where that line is that we start to look at what products, if that's council's direction, that we want to expand on that.
I have a question, just in general. When someone is like ordering these products off the internet, is it the same as like ordering alcohol where you have to show an ID to get it dropped off? Is it like that?
You know, to be honest, I don't think I'm really, never ordered cigarettes over the internet, to be honest with you.
I haven't either, but my husband has like a beer club and he has to show his ID when he gets like UPS comes or whatever it is.
So I do know individuals that have purchased ZYN products and there is a age verification for that. I'm assuming that it would be similar for other types.
Yeah, I think, I think the underlying point there is we're, we're making a lot of assumptions on things that we just don't know yet. I know I've, I've purchased alcohol online that say you have to verify your age and they just drop it off and walk off. So you just never know.
Thank you. So I was going to do my, okay.
You can do, oh, well, I was just, thank you. I was just going to, I was just going to observe that it seems like a slippery slope when we start trying to expand this. But I, I, I am interested in looking at things that, that really help our citizens and our young citizens. And I am appalled at, you know, I guess, I mean, I guess it's expected. There's just new things all the time and people are making money and they, people, they sell things that people become addicted. people become addicted to, and they start them out on young children, and I just think that's wrong. And so I really, to the extent that our folks, you know, partners that came today acknowledge that these synthetic nicotine products are an issue, to me, it's almost like a no-brainer that we would expand it if we could to sort of just take on that family of products without going too far down the slippery slope of everything. And I understand how that snowballs. So I guess I would, I'm ready to make a motion to approve this, but I know you have comments. But I would approve this as is, and I would like at least there to be some limited evaluation of minor amendments that would at least address what the high school students, Friday Night Live came here and said, this is a problem. And I wanted to just honor the fact that they brought that to my attention because I didn't know. And so I think we need to listen to our folks here, and if we can be on the cutting edge, that'd be cool. I think that's fine. Anyway.
Thank you. So since my past career was a prosecutor for 30 years, I am familiar with the kind of challenges that interim police chief and City Manager Downing have brought up. And I think we all agree that it would be great and a very worthwhile thing to go after all sorts of tobacco products, but I'm, first of all, guessing that, and you've told us, it's quite specific to electronic devices and vapes now. And I just know from doing the legal work that everything's very specific. So I imagine it could be quite a project to, well, to do all of this, to finesse, go after different products. I see the point. Let me back up. I don't think it would be just a short research issue, and I think it would use up a fair amount of staff time and also city attorney time. The enforcing in terms of internet sales is, I think we all would agree, a great idea, but that's also extremely complicated. And I used to work on the drug team and just doing, the amount of law enforcement personnel and legwork that goes into setting up some sort of, you know, just, it's huge. And I do see the point, I feel like, ready to move forward with the ordinance, appreciate the work, and that's all fine. And then I share the concern of everyone regarding the other products, and I guess I feel, I don't guess, I do feel that we should just kind of have it out there, something that we're aware of. And I had to laugh when councilperson Guthrie referred to the big cities like Slow, because I was thinking San Jose, San Francisco, Los Angeles. But I figure that one of those jurisdictions probably is coming up with something fairly quick, and that is actually a big deal. It can sound like it's nice to be the first one out there, but it can be a huge effort. And if you can see how it's worked for other cities and how the law fits with what you're trying to do, that's a million times easier. So that would be my suggestion. I'd vote for the current ordinance, but I wouldn't be asking particularly directing staff to do other things at this point. Sorry, that took so long. Okay. Do we have a motion? Or do you want...
I didn't hear any discussion. I have to admit, I was surprised to hear the concern about penalties for youth and that somehow that negated the ability to enforce against retail. And I wonder if you have any thoughts on, I mean, I don't see the association, but I wonder if you have any thoughts on that.
I don't know if there was a, it hindered our ability to enforce on retail, or kind of two separate things. We can do the retail enforcement for selling their products illegally, and that's what this amendment kind of allows us to do. The prohibited sales and the enforcement section where we can, we would hold someone under 21, we would bring enforcement action against them is actually a separate municipal code. It's not included in any of these. It's, I believe it's 6.060, I believe it is. So that would be a separate amendment to that municipal code if we wanted to explore that option.
Okay. I just thought it was somehow included here because it came up in the comment and something that, yeah, I don't want to spend any time on it.
Not to beat a dead horse, but I meant to address that, and I understand how there could be something that sounds minor. We used to get this with drunken public, things of that nature. But as law enforcement, I understand that that can be useful. And if the overall goal is to prevent or lessen the ability for youth to be using tobacco, I could see that being a tool in your case, and you have just told us that it is still useful, I believe. So I agree, I wouldn't be trying to change that at this point. So any more comments, or can we have a motion?
So I'll move the introduction of an ordinance amending Aurora Grande New Smoke Code Sections 8.36.020 and 8.36.050 relating to the sale of electronic tobacco products in Aurora Grande.
I second.
All right. Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Marvelia?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Seacrest?
Yes. All right. Then hard to believe, but I think we're at item 12, Council Communications. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share?
I just have a brief announcement, and it's only partially informative, but I'm hoping it gets people's attention. Festival Mosaic is going on. It's a pretty amazing music festival that's all over the county. And I know particularly, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact date, but I know there's going to be a cool concert at St. Barnabas, and it's actually very low cost. I think it's $15, and I would encourage folks to look online. Thank you. Oh. Do you have... Oh, no. You don't? Okay. Great. That we're adjourned? Thank you.